I pray to the Confederate flag of the United States of America and the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good thing he made it.
Yeah, I see.
Uh, okay, roll call.
Uh, Alderman, here, Alderman Zenenjuda.
Yes.
Alderman Carl Throes. And Alderman Bartlett.
Here.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
I make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Who's second?
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Approve. Approve of the considered agenda.
Make a motion for the approval of the considered agenda.
That's right.
Motion made in favor on favor.
Aye.
Approve. Public phone? I'm being bitter than none. I knew they were scoring another thing, I don't, oh, that would deny.
Oh, that's second, I know where to put this, but I'm closing my office in Cape at the end of the year, so I'll probably have some desks and a copy machine or something like that if you guys, like, don't get to the city so that you have it for that or something.
Do you not want to be in Cape no more?
Most of them.
Are you going to be around?
Uh, just, I'm, I don't know, it's retiring because of my health stuff, man, I just want to be at home. Just want to be at home all the time.
You still getting out for some period, right?
No, 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 I'm not going to be working as a doctor anymore, I'm just going to be home.
It's a retirement. It's a lot of fun.
We'll find out.
But if you find out, you're going to get no dime when you retire.
I'm busy, I'm too busy to worry, that's what it is.
Yeah.
And then, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time here, but I want to put my cupboard on Fourth Street is too short, so tomorrow I'm just going to dig it up and put in a longer one, do I need a permit for that, or?
Yeah, kind of.
Yeah, there's.
Because we got to regulate, we got ruled only on the cupboard.
Yeah, well, show me the order.
Okay.
Okay, there. So the, I don't know if it's two or what, but the funding was denied for the sewer system. Now, I talked to Charlie, he really did that. They thought they sent us some paperwork on it, but it has been denied, but he said they're going to dig it out and give us more funding than what this was. And I haven't had to talk to him since we till.
Did they give a reason for the denial?
We supposed to be getting a letter from the people of power to be on, but we haven't got yet, but the engineer told me it wasn't denied. So our engineer told us. So we're getting papers on it, and he, they already followed for another route, they go for the funding for the grant for the sewer system. But they're working on it, but right now, holidays, the mail being what it's made, I mean, we're getting one in please. Thank you. I know even they're working hard, if both of you guys are working hard, I don't see why they'd do it better. Okay. Uh, emergency management. Police department, he then, he don't, he just got all work, I told him, don't bother, so we call your home for you. He said he'd be here for seven, and I said, he texted him back to her, not come, but we call home for you.
Right.
Do you know that? Did you already know that?
Well, it makes sense, I mean.
No, I thought you were saying you knew.
I was hoping he would have did that whenever I seen his text.
And I found out he did.
It's going to be after seven before he gets there, and we know he's.
Police department.
Pregnant?
Well, we had three calls this month, uh, two of them, or all three of them, were mutual aid response to her, and we had one NDA and then two residential fire. We received our new radios that we purchased from the community foundation grant, they actually are great, so I got one new one here. Definitely can get out a lot better, and, uh.
Got their new Motorola, they have them on DVD?
These are the new Kenwood, or Kenwood.
I know Motorola gave special five thousand St. Louis, so I'll limit.
Yeah, anyways, we ordered them back in March, and they finally got here, so, uh, they actually worked pretty good, we did a lot of talking to dispatch with them, and they actually can hear us now, we can hear them, it's very clear, so.
Good, yeah.
Um, the other thing is, is we purchased, um, out of our funds at Firehouse, we purchased some ram jammers for our execution, it's more help to, for a timely manner of vehicle access, if we got to do a road dash roll or anything like that, basically what it is, a jam that goes in the door for your ramp, and you can set it however far you need to set it, back and forth. Uh, we've had trouble in the past, and we finally bought a set, which they are really, really sturdy on, so. We got accepted for a conservation grant, so we're going to be getting, uh, let's see here. We're going to be getting, we got accepted for it, we asked for, so we're going to be getting, uh, turn around. We're going to be getting four inch and three quarter double jacket fifty foot hoses, uh, two inch and a half heavy duty nozzles, and one eight six inch valve for forty two, and a new eighteen inch fire change valve. So that's, um, we have.
It's a full brand, or?
No, it's a fifty fifty, so we spend all together, we get half early, half later. We got that done. The other thing is, our department, next chief meeting that we have for us, the lawyer for trying to go to the district of the county with people at our house, but with municipalities, they're going to talk to you how to do things different because of the fire tax system and everything that's going on, we're not seeing our funds for the fire tax, so what they're going to try to do is if we go to a full district of the county, then we get taxed on that, so we get, I guess, more tax revenue off of it, so if we go that route, but with us, being a municipality, like I said, again, being a municipality, that's where it comes in with board member. So at the next chief meeting, it'd be nice for any board members, or any of the board members to go, and with us, and actually listen to what they got to say, basically what went off of Wolf Creek's district, or Hillford district, so everything like set in stone with them now, and they're actually doing really good with it, so I'm going to turn around and, I mean, there's funding that helps us out to better respond to, you know, the volunteer departments are getting pretty shallow of volunteers, you know, nobody wants to do anything important, you're not going to take to do it, so it's, it's a kind of head 2-1, it's good, but not good, you guys listen to it, and we'll see where we go.
So that takes care of our thanks.
So basically, if we go to the district, and what would have to happen, because we're a municipality here, so we have a tax revenue for the city member, or the individuals in the city, basically, they pay taxes, they don't pay fire taxes. So basically, what this district do is it's countywide, turn around, it'd be one chief, main chief, or one main chief on the board, and then you have like your shutdown of your other departments. Um, so what would have to happen is turn around, the tax revenue will go up, and everybody pays a tax, you know, revenue. The only thing that's different is like with us, because that's where this comes into play too, we have cash, gas, the island, we have part there to count. That's, and just like Kenzie, they got part Jefferson County, so that's where they would have to, to find out the difference of what would happen there. So that's what this water does, so it'd be nice when you guys come and visit and actually listen in on it.
When is it?
Uh, I will have to get the date, I think it's in January. Anyways, I'm, I think it's the second Tuesday of January, I have to look at my other sheet, I forgot it.
Right now, because I will know.
I can text you, or I can, you gotta tell April, and she can email you all, whichever one, if you want to go, be great. I'm happy when I do it. Um, the other thing is, is we had to replace batteries on forty one, they went up there, um, had to replace the exhaust pipe on forty two, that was all done, um, had to replace the battery on seventy one with a brush pump unit, uh, so we could, for our engines, so to start it up instead of him. Um, that's basically it, I guess, for the fire problem.
There?
That's it, on that part.
Enjoying it. Thank you for the break. Okay, third department.
Oh, got, uh, we got eighth street patched up.
Yeah, they told me they had packed that big hole up there.
Yeah, I got that hole in a couple places there, they did a good job doing that, uh, we're getting ready to replace all these signs up down about your neck of the woods there on Third Street and Sixty One, where the tarnacles, got the stop signs all turned around, and the road signs.
Nobody shot it in yet, so.
Yeah, well, there's some signs that the batteries are all gone, that we're going to go ahead and replace, we got the signs here, I checked them out last week, so the signs are here, we just got to.
Just about everything is gone, it's kind of like being out in the desert, you can see, that was before you hit that.
Yeah.
But, uh. Come to the spring, we're going to clean the ditch lines out, get the last debris from the tornado clean up, and get that.
I don't have a tornado, but it was, uh, only water department, uh, you done?
Yeah, I'm not sure, that's.
About to, I did take, rent a dump truck, I mean, a tackle, but I don't know what the hour or anything yet, but we got a, I think we got a good deal, I ain't put a spot on anything, he said whatever, you know, be good, but we got the trailer and everything, of course, we had a breakdown, and we're getting that on Street Department, but I fed it back to him, and cleaned it up. But we had it three or four days, because that's the way it worked, was to get the fan done, we go rent one, we got paid every day, only we, I think we thought we had six, seven hours, five hours.
They had five hours on.
Five hours on, and we just, you know, give him about what we used it, we're paying them days for what we used it, but we were able to keep it till we got the job done, and that meant everything, and if David didn't anything, we would have rented it in, but it does a good job. Wasn't that tricky?
Oh, you showed a wonderful reaction.
Say a lot of talking, I mean, you know, finish some of the areas I dug, a little bit of Bobcat wouldn't have did that.
No, no.
But, uh, I actually learned how to change the bucket that lay my car.
Way over.
But I do have to get a, we're going to have to run some consensus money today, I'll get the airwork or something, and while we're paying him, he'll take anything, but I want to make it reasonable within, because we're saving money just paying for the hour we use it, or the way it is. First, we get the trailer to bring it on, we don't have to, then we rent, you got to take the trailer, get it, or rent a truck.
Yeah, that's awesome, yeah.
And we, and it's got a ditch bucket with it, we won't clean out some of these ditches this year, by the week, he don't think he get it, take it for a week. Okay, sure, now, back street, through, we were taking, we were going to go get it, running empty, when the dump truck blew up again. And we had it towed in, and we sent it forward, and come by that, and we did it twice as, identical thing. And the truck was doing the manifold, was lifting too, and it was making the boots bad, and you welded all that up and fixed it, and I went and got it and hiked in the camera, I did break that speed limit a little bit a couple times to see if it was going to blow back off again, and, and talking to Dennis, and then, who was? Bring that car. And, uh, that, that runs a lot better and everything, and it's, it's good.
That definitely feels like it's got more horsepower now, I think that's a big improvement.
Yeah, it's been being a father, but it's just got worse, but, uh, I ain't going to say how fast I got it, but I got it that couple times, it was going to blow off, it would blow off, and the boots never went over four.
Yeah.
So I think we got a problem, but, uh, now if he can get the dump fork, then we'll be back and check. I don't, I don't make anything else on the street. I'll definitely need a pump for that, I don't think, for the.
Yeah, we'll have to look into a bigger pump for it, I mean, maybe not this year, but next spring, when you just break down the.
Well, it's only three or four dollars, dollars than that, yeah.
I mean, anyway, it takes probably maybe two or three hours to change the hoses and everything over, so.
I was thinking you could use my drive, but if you have to raise the bed, not make it twice as good to work then, I don't think I got room.
Yeah, and we have to come down too, we can actually open one in Bader's Firehouse, and, you know, do a major.
That's probably cheaper.
No, Dave will probably realize who's his guy, or maybe even get Dave to do it. Okay, it's all yours, then, the water department, you, you, y'all.
Uh, the other thing I want to share to you, Ronnie, that we possibly going to need to get some more cinders or salt, um, we do, I mean, we're okay right now, but if something sort of major happening, uh, in the long run, I think it'd be cheaper, in the long run, just to buy pure salt, and sell cinders, and then having to mix everything together with it.
You know, I know what it is.
Which you can get from St. Louis, you can break in and load down, so whatever you do, we pile it up in there, or if we have to stockpile it outside, we just stockpile it outside and throw carts over, that's what we do.
We got that in the building right now, don't we?
Yeah, I took a link to you, that cinders, but it's not really cinders anymore, especially.
But you had to get with her or somebody, you got to, somebody, you had to show her out, you had to go to somebody that owned it, you know. April, now, has never done that, so, you get ready for that, once you know that.
The water side, we're down, we, uh, we had three major water leaks in town, finally they surfaced and found them. Uh, one was in front of Bader's, the other one was on Seventh Street, and another one was on Fourth Street, uh, we got them knocked out within a few days of, uh, they was leaking for a while, but we got them knocked out. Um, the other thing is too, is we had a few, uh, during the meter read, we had a few meters that was pretty high usage. We turned around and made contact with all of them that had high usage, which one knew already what happened, because water was going over sixty one. Anyway, so, um, but altogether, between November tenth and all the way to November twenty eighth, uh, we used seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty gallons of water that went through our system, uh, so that's basically an average test, and that's fifty thousand gallons a day. Uh, the other problem that's going on is with these new service lines, uh, they use cheap copper, and it's, uh, electrodes is going through it and picking it up, which I got pieces in my truck out there, and what happened, um, turn around and creating, creating a problem, so, uh, basically, we're going to have to maybe get together, find a way to fund it, and I come in and replace the service lines all the way, so. I mean, maybe not all of them going to do it, but I found certain areas actually starting to take effect a little bit, so. Um, the other thing is, is I'm, uh, back east coming back good, uh, the sewer side of this, um, sample bin coming back good, uh, we're waiting on a fire hydrant from, uh, Corning Main, uh, it's on order, it's just everything back order right now, so it's, um, hopefully we get that, before we get that in. Um, I did get a bid from Quipacrow today, or the other day came in, but, um, for a new blower, uh, and with warranty and everything, warranty, it's going to be thirty-three hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-seven cents for a new blower, we're down to one blower right now, so that one goes, and kind of, uh, to creep that out, so, so I'm, I'm ramming it, I mean, I just left it to you guys, I can get a new root, um, but, uh, I got a twenty-twenty in there already, and it's been making it stand, and it blew up again, so it's, I think the roots are going to joke in my book, so.
How much did you say?
I'm going to say usually around.
Uh, well, that's about the normal price, yeah, I mean, for, I mean, used to, I did the root for almost twenty-six hundred dollars, but everything material is done, went out, so I mean, it's crazy, so this one's thirty-three hundred and seventy-six calories minus seven cents.
They're both right up, same plate, same.
Yeah, it's the same, same setup, I just, I mean, it's.
We got to get, we got that for both of them down.
Yeah, we're screwed.
Well, I did talk to Dave, um, about that, um, he said that the other blower is basically going to cost you the same amount to rebuild it and fix it as it is to buy it and do it, so.
We always get a warning on you.
Yeah, not that, because rebuild, because rebuild, yeah.
You get a better warning when you do rebuild.
Yeah.
And then, uh, the other thing is, I talked to you guys last meeting, that Hand of Enders gave me a bid to replace the grinder system over on Eighth Street, and I'm, uh, turn around, it's about nine thousand, it's in something, uh, Quipacrow can replace, but they're going to be replacing pretty well everything, a new pit, and everything they're replacing, um, the only thing that'll come with it is a new motor, so that's going to be an extra two thousand dollars for a new motor for it, and capacitors and stuff, but right now, just to replace the railing and everything, and the pit, and tie everything in, this was with labor, is forty-six hundred and seventeen dollars, but if you go and put a new motor in, it's going to be about six thousand and something.
It'll be cheaper than that.
Yeah, it'd be, yeah, cheaper nine thousand.
Where can they get to it?
Uh, we'd have to call and find out whenever they'd be available to do it.
Well, I'm thinking it's an option there, right?
That's our standard pump, what we use around.
Well, it's, it's a different type of pump, I just replaced one, uh, that one, it's a different type of pump, but it works the same way, it's just a little different water, uh, so, but it works good, I mean, it sounded really nice with everything off, so. Uh, they are cheaper pumps, they're INGs, but, um, we can only use King's or we use Myers, but they're getting away from the Myers, and they're going to King, but now they have to use new ones, the same water fire thing, it's just a little bit different water. Anyway, it's not, it's not fully new water no more, so it's.
No, no, Brady Mackman said he wanted his out, he want his gone, so we got to get parts off of his, if we have to, just for another grind.
And the thing about it is, like I told Carl that before, using a huge grinder of a pit at the length of line, or water ain't there, then you're asking for trouble.
Right.
So I mean, if it's a short pit, yes, no problem at all, but say, well, like, and that's a Yody line, replace Yody's here.
Yeah.
Um, they're, I mean, they're fourteen foot deep, basically, so, I mean.
Oh, that's it, yeah.
Um, the other thing is too, is had multiple grinders, sort of relay boxes contacted going out, but they're all replaced, and, uh, the other grinder up on Locust and Third, at, um, Thompson residence, got a new grinder in it, I got a full wire, but we have a problem with the discharge line. I have to figure out where to shut off that or something that's clogged up, but, I mean, it's kind of the wrong time of year to try to do digging, and that's the bad part, because I don't, I don't want to have an episode up there, because you're dealing with forest maintenance, and not having, I mean, him, I got another guy that helps me, but doing something like that, it's going to be a, probably an all-day affair, so. But yeah, I mean, that's the only other, other problem we have with a major grinder right now, I mean, we've been trying to keep them pumped down, uh, but, you know, rain cut this out, they're getting in the yards and stuff, and, uh, tractor acting a little funny, but we got it written going, but, um, everything's good on that, so, that's all I got to report on that, any questions, I don't.
And that to get yours, Larry?
Let's see.
Cross my fingers, thank you.
My heart didn't hurt, but.
How, what, how are we going to do that on Lake Three if we can't find the sewer? What kind of line is that coming in, that copper?
That's good shit. So basically, what you have to do is there's a clean out over on, at the old boathouse there, and then there's a clean out up the road by me, where that sewer line comes in.
Sewer muck and all that.
You just have to, well, you can shut the houses up, but open up both clean outs to reduce the pressure, that's the only way you can do it. I mean, I couldn't, I took the metal detector over there, and I can't find a valve.
What'd you take, a metal detector or that one?
Well, I took that, the, the yellow one.
Well, uh, we found out when we tried to locate Gray, there's a hell of a big difference between that and metal detector.
Well.
We couldn't find anything with that one, then it probably hit the metal detector, then just found my valve.
Well, you got to remember that, that unit there was probably twenty years ago.
Then, what I'm saying is, we may fly with a metal detector.
Go ahead, if we find a valve, that'd be awesome, so.
But look, Kyle, it was, it made a difference when we got his, uh, metal detector.
Yeah, we saw it, I said.
You ever want dope?
Oh, that one, I might want to come up with that.
That one, I see, you want to get it. Park Timothy, we are having a first funeral in the burial in the Templewood Timothy, so in fact, because we're out of double locks, and tired of days with one of our active employees' son while we go, so, but, uh, it's going to be a mess, I, it took us a lot of time to get it all figured out when we did, but when, there was one start at one end, and you end up, you're starting at the last, and working our way down, when we have bitter, nobody has to walk over graves and things to get to the, the new bitter, and that everything going, and no hits, over hits. All casted, uh, hits on that to be round, and we're a little above, but I, I don't.
No, up, right, just enough.
When we can.
We're, we got over top of it, and it's not turning up the motor.
They might be an inch above ground, but we don't get that close, but they can't get that high. I mean, they, they can, they put base supplies and things on, they hit something, I mean, they, we're not, I don't know. That's been organized since the day that we bought this company, with the price, and it's still saying other things, that we will have a first funeral, a burial up there there. And so I got it on Saturday. Um, were the parks closed for the wedding?
Should be, yeah.
I had no, 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 we're, a couple days ago it was open.
I have off tomorrow, so.
I'll go off on that. So, okay, yeah, I have some here for citizens participating, uh, who, uh, who want to come up there and say anything, everything, what you got, what probably you got? I think I know.
In fact, I was a neighbor there, and, uh, I had a lot of problems, and that's not a lot of money, a month before that, it's a hundred and forty, and it was pretty high, and I didn't, you know, I had a, I thought maybe I had to read it back, three hundred, so I checked everything, everything was set, there's no meat. And I was setting the meter, and in two hours, it got easy one, and it went to a hundred and twenty-eight gallons. And how did I get that, I don't know, because nothing's been used, so it seems to do something wrong with the meter, and the way it monitors something, stop and go, many meters, and it stops and goes twenty meters again, or is it, you know, because that's what I do, I do tiny houses, six hundred gallons of water.
You don't have a reading from the meter to the house?
Nope, no.
Absolutely positive.
I really took, I actually throw apart to look for it, to be able to see the whole thing, just moving, but I know that.
But your meter's not in your bathroom, I'm talking from the meter to your house.
Why, I'll tell you, there's nothing from the meter to my house, that's supposed to be it.
Okay.
So it just, what is, do you think?
Like, there's.
Yeah.
If you look at your meter in the top.
I, I know that it stopped all the way, and then I look, and there's nothing running in my house, and it didn't move.
Okay, then, you all got one up, and we got ours, you want to explain it through, or? You get a meter and get it tested, you got to put up seventy-five dollars, and then, it'll be a certified, and if it, if it bad, we'll adjust your bill and give you back your seventy-five dollars, but if it does good, then you got, if you're going to lose your seventy-five dollars, you're going to get that meter for it.
Well, as I say, it's good, obviously, it's never been a bad one, you know, it's a bad one, they know it's a bad one.
Well, we, we don't get.
Ninety-nine percent of the time when they go bad, they read slow, they just do your advance, they never read fast.
I'm, I'm telling you, you're to the point now, Maureen, and it, it, it's going to be that way on the way. Right now, you're saying you got a bad meter, and we're saying you got a good meter, now, you, oh, you got to put up seventy-five dollars, they're coming for another meter in there.
That was, yeah, that month it didn't work, I mean, this month it worked.
What?
That reading, that reading didn't work, that was two hundred dollars, now this reading comes up to eighty-seven dollars, again, to the, to the.
We, nobody paid for a meter, you got to put up seventy-five dollars to get yours tested, if it works, if it tests when the federal deadline, good, we're going to bring it right back and put it back in there, and you lose your seventy-five dollars, if it tests bad. We'll give you back your seventy-five on, plus adjust your water bill to what has been the back twelve-month average. And that's the only option you got now, but you're saying you ain't got a leak. So you're saying that to me? I'm saying that the month that you go down, a hundred and forty. Have you got any more residents in your house than you have? No, no. Not as though. If there's one more person left, my water was up twenty bucks. I'm right. I don't know. I'm not, I mean, the conversation for it, the water bill, the, the only option you got is the one I told you, per our ordinance. You put up seventy-five dollars, Kyle, or I mean, uh, my, somebody come and take it, take it. Can I, can I see the paper that you, you see back from whatever company?
Sure, we can take it. Drake, know your water bill.
It'll get sent to you, just.
I, I want the bills sent to me, I want to know if there was something broken. We, when we get the meter back, we will get our top, but excuse me, man, we'll get a front out. What company is, and what is the best, is. That, that water company thing, they're gonna do. They test them, they're certified. So we just go straight, go be the ones that's around the place? Yeah.
They won't be fixing it, they're gonna check your meter. If it's.
They, 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 then we do it, you can't test it in your ground. You gotta take it up there and they gotta have a machine and equipment, a bottle of water and see what goes through us. They know how much going through and what the meter reads and everything, it's calibrated. They should. They calibrated all of them? Huh? I ain't never calibrated. They will when they're running through there, if it's calibrated right, they're running right.
If you're.
I, I'm not gonna argue with you, that's all. I'm not arguing, I'm just telling you what's going on. We're not, we don't want cheating. I don't want you paying. Another one, you are. But we can't be changing everybody. Another issue is this. That one, another two weeks without me, without me knowing that that was happening, that that was a fear, a leak, that it went from thirteen hundred to ninety-six hundred. Nobody called me, nobody knocked on my door. It went on two weeks, when I explained it to the secretary of the desk, she says, we don't have to tell you.
I don't believe that.
She didn't hear.
She said exactly that.
She did not, I was here every time you have came in. She has not told you.
Were you on the phone?
No, I was, I was standing right there beside her.
I don't heard that.
She had her, she had you on speaker.
Anytime we read a meter, I'm, the day we read the meter, and one of them got a high reading, they called immediately the next day and pretended I, I'm, I read their meter. And if you showing a bunch, we call you or try to get over to you. And I do know it. Then I do know, nobody got over me, I'm a student or nothing. We tried to get over one for three days, I had to get the police to go look for it. Because it didn't answer the phone, they wouldn't do nothing. We only, we don't call you every day, we try to get over. No, no, I just, there's nothing on a call, like he, there's a message or whatever, but she. She's not here to defend, she's not here to defend. I was home. So that's what I already said, I had to leave my house after five o'clock. I don't know who, who got, who got back the red, who got to the door. They should be told when that happens, turn the water on. You got something there?
Yes.
Say it.
For one, we didn't know about Maria because I talked to you at the gas station.
Right.
I told you you had a leak.
Yes, you did.
Had something leaking.
Right, so.
That was the day, that was the day of, that was the day of that I talked to you.
The second I got the bill, because I wouldn't have known, because I got the bill.
Well, no, I told you beforehand that you had a leak.
Yeah.
You told me you didn't have a leak. I said, you have to have a leak if you're that high. Or I went over there to look at your meter, I watched your meter.
I did too.
And anyways, it did bump a little bit. Now, the thing about it is, if you have a toilet, you have a toilet.
Right.
A, a float, or your, your flotation, your filler valve, or you have your little plunger that goes in the bottom. If it's leaking past, that's a lot of water that goes through.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, the thing about it is, if, if the water is already been used and you're back to normal now, there was something going on.
Right.
Water or something. But the thing about it is, that our meter is not registered wrong. The thing about it is, a, a meter can actually register anywhere between ninety-seven percent. Anyway, it's ninety-seven percent. The thing about it is, if a meter is going bad, a meter's running slow. It's your, your benefits, it's not the city.
I understand that, but it.
But the thing about it is, is if it went back to normal, something got changed in that house.
Nothing, you understand.
Either a toilet, the toilet float or something.
Nothing, nothing's changed.
I'm just saying.
I know, nothing's changed. Nothing's changed. I'm telling you what's gonna happen, now don't think that ever. If I leave, check good, you gotta pay. I understand how people work, how it's the ninety-six hundred, sixty hundred gallons low. Where did the water go? The water's inside my house, so where's it coming up anyway? Where did that much water? We got a guy that lost thousands of gallons and he don't know what's going. But it's going somewhere to put our meter in his house. But he don't know what's going. I thought from here to. And he gotta, gotta get a thirty-five kind of components around here. And you're able to just. They're gonna be phoning the farmers, does that have a permit? You ready? Does that have a permit to work there, the front, they want to come in? You wanna tell her around there or you want me to?
Kind of business wise.
Business, perfect, it's not, it's like a couple of, it's not expensive. Fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars? They're both, but we're halfway through the year, so fifteen.
Right. What's if you don't wanna pay that, so I said, okay, well, you can't look there.
Well, I mean, you can, you know, you can.
Oh, well, most of the popular farmers, you have, they renew them every year.
I will tell you this, there's that one guy that called a plumber and he gonna come, cause he's been there before and uh, they won't pay the bills. Or they're slow about paying the bills, so. And they, you can't get, if you have problems with a plumber, don't call him again. Better call another, it ain't. They tried to seventy-hundred just to show up.
Yeah.
That's not even a penny. But they, they, this one guy, I don't know how he gonna get his bill, because I'm down there, he's got bad credit and everything, he won't pay his bill. Now, I don't know that, that's a common name, but that's none of my business. My business is, if your pump was bad there in a couple of months there, now you say it ain't bad, something's wrong. And if you're talking about a commodity doing it, it almost does it, one that leaks down. Yeah. Two gallons and then do it, then may not do it. Then it will happen again, do it again. But we can't adjust that. Cause if we can't, if that meter shows bad, we will adjust everything. But you're saying it's running good. Yeah. They don't go back and do it. Because the one thing that doesn't go down is out. I'm telling you. It, or people, but. Ninety-six hundred. I'm telling you. Second one was before, thirteen hundred. The three hundred, the ninety-six hundred, and then that's uh. I, I got something to do, I, I did something.
There's nothing we can do.